Check one, two, testing audio. Check one, two, testing audio.
Hi, Councilor Santos, we can hear you.
Okay, welcome to our special council meeting. This meeting has been called for the following specific purpose of considering the following matters: Brampton Heritage Board minutes of April 15, 2025; Home Opportunities Loan Agreement; follow-up to closed session report Solicitor Vice Re-Planning File; Transit Innovation Project. We have all members here today except for, we have, I believe, two online?
Um, Councilor Santos. Sorry, through you, Mayor Brown, Councilor Santos is joining us online today. Councilor Maderos has sent his request, he's on other city business. And I believe Council Fortini will be joining us online if not with us.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, Councilor Maderos.
This takes us to, this takes us to approval of agenda. I have a motion moved by Counselor Tor, seconded by Counselor Power to approve the agenda. All those in favor, motion carries. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, the clerk will note for the meeting minutes. Delegations, are there any delegations here today for any matters on the agenda? Seeing none, um, we have no delegations to receive. For the consent motion, um, I believe we can accept the, so we don't need to go into closed session, we can accept the closed session report and we'll move a motion in public, um, at the time.
Okay, and the...
That would be item number seven point one, yeah.
What about five point two?
Five point two is...
The staff report, the Home Opportunities Loan Agreement?
Yeah, we can receive the staff report and there'll be a public motion to put forward.
Is five point two on consent?
Yeah, yes.
And then we have five point one, the Brampton Heritage Board, that's full.
Yes, we'll have a, we'll have a public motion for that. Okay, so that takes us to our first item, sorry, summary recommendations Brampton Heritage Board. That has been held and I believe we, held by Counselor Plessy, but I believe we have a motion from Counselor Keenan to put on the screen. Oh, all those in favor of the consent motion?
Wait, 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 can you go through the consents properly again? I just didn't want to make sure they're all on there. Sorry, which consents are, which, which ones are not consent, let's maybe get that.
Okay, through you, Mayor Brown, uh, five point one, uh, the Brampton Heritage Board's summary of recommendation has been held by Counselor Plessy. Five point two, staff report Home Opportunities Loan Agreement is on consent.
Yeah.
Five point three, discussion item for planning file is held. And seven point one, closed report is on consent, is that correct?
Correct, but the public motion will deal with it.
And the public motion, there will be an open session motion regarding seven point one?
Yes.
To report out with, yes.
Yes, exactly.
Through, through the chair, can I just get clarification on five point three? I thought that's on consent, is that not?
Uh, five point three is the, um, discussion item regarding the planning file?
We can add that to consent if there's a, if the motion is...
If the motion is on the agenda, is that what you're adding to consent?
Through, through the mayor, that's right.
Okay.
Okay, we'll add that to consent too.
All right.
Okay, this takes us to, um, all those in favor of the consent motion? Motion carries. This takes us to, um, Brampton Heritage Board, thank you Counselor Plessy for holding it, I believe Counselor Keenan has a motion.
I think Counselor Plessy can deal with this first.
I'm happy to deal with mine first. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, so it just came to our attention that a resident had delegated the Brampton Heritage Board, um, last night. Thank you, Counselor Vincentage, for, um, for the advice that you gave our residents and for working, uh, with them, um, you know, your leadership on the Heritage Board is, you know, stellar and phenomenal and I really, we really appreciate your, the guidance that you provided us. Um, you know, with all that being said, it's, it's come to our attention that, um, not enough discussions, and we've talked about it before, not enough discussions are happening with residents, uh, when it comes to the designation of, um, of their home, uh, being listed for on, uh, for heritage. And, you know, it's, they can take that the way you want to take it, it's from the planning standpoint, it's always difficult to hear residents stand up to say, well, we were never notified of this item and, you know, it's, you have to open your heart and listen to everybody that, uh, that comes forward and, and really asking for, asking for the help. Um, so what essentially I would like to do, um, Counselor Brier and myself, I'd like to refer that River Road, uh, home back to, uh, back to staff, um, as a catalyst to look at ways that we can essentially, um, you know, have open dialogue and communication with, um, with residents. A lot of people feel that, um, when their home is listed, there, it's all, all of a sudden, it's not worth anything anymore and, and we know that that's not completely accurate, we know that's not accurate, we track that, um, but we're not getting, um, getting that across to the residents, so it's more of, we need to have a whole bunch in better communication. Also, a residence will, a resident will say, well, you know, I need to change my door, but you only allow me to do these, this door. Not accurate, we allow you to do a ton of doors, we just, you can't modernize something that's, you know. Um, and then also on top of that, it's, you know, it's very important to the residents of Brampton and, and us as, as, um, counselors that, you know, we, we hold on and, uh, you know, praise a lot of the names that have come out of Brampton and McMerchie is, is a huge name, it's a huge Brampton name. Um, that being said, just because they live in the home doesn't make me feel that a home should be kept. I think a plaque with their story, um, is the best way to, to tell a story of any resident that, that lived in Brampton, so, you know, that's long-winded referral, but that's a referral back to staff for, uh, for us to have more dialogues on this one and, and future ones. And I think that hopefully builds off of, uh, also what Counselor Keenan is doing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Plessy, and well put, I've heard the same concerns. There is, um, I think, uh, we, this designation is significant and I think we just need to have a better level of collaboration for, for what it means because there is, I think, fear would be an understatement to how some people, um, view the designation. Over to Counselor Keenan.
Oh, oh, um, all those in favor of the referral from Counselor Plessy?
Motion carries. The seconder was Counselor Brier. Yes, Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, so, uh, appreciate everything that you had said there, Counselor Plessy, I know we hear it all the time, especially as a downtown counselor, we got a lot of heritage in our area and, um, you know, the, the good ones, we definitely want to keep heritage. Um, that, that in mind, you know, we have the LRT coming, the River Rock project and we're both on lock some serious development and we've, um, pledged to do so, um, so I did have, uh, somebody, somebody designated, um, on the, uh, property along Main Street, along the Main Street corridor, um, at yesterday's Heritage Board, uh, so this motion is, is to move that process along to, um, uh, go with a notice of intention to repeal the bylaw for that 133 Main Street property. The motion's on the screen, it's pretty, pretty straightforward, but this will, this, this allows, um, some, some good development in a, in a great area where there's already existing buildings right beside it, um, so I think it fits perfectly. Um, I need another seconder because Counselor Maderos was going to second it, but unfortunately he's not here.
Moved by Counselor Keenan, seconded by Counselor Plessy. All those in favor? Motion carries. A motion for the remainder of recommendations moved by Counselor Visante, seconded by Counselor Power for the remaining Heritage Minute recommendations. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to our, uh, next item, five point two and five point three have been on consent. This takes us to the public report from, uh, do we do public question period after or We have it listed before, but normally it's after all items.
Um, we do it before a closed session, so if we do it before we do that, we can tell you.
Okay, are there any, are there any public questions from the public question period? Seeing none. Um, we now have our, the motion coming from closed session, if the clerk could put it on the, on the screen. Seen none. We now have our, the motion coming from closed session. If the clerk could put it on the, on the screen. And this is moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Tor, and I can speak to it. And just to say, this is something that I'm really excited about for Last Mile Transit. It's a project I've been working with Counselor Tor on with Minister Sakaria, who also happens to be the Minister of Transportation. They announced the first one of these in Bradford earlier in April. And it allows us to use Presto to support Last Mile Transit. It's transit innovation. And I would be very surprised if this doesn't become a po- a popular addition to our transit system. And it allows individuals riding provincial go-transit to get picked up and taken that last mile of transit. And it, I think, we're going to exceed our expectations on it. We use dormant capital for the acquisition, but we can use Presto as a revenue source. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to our confirming bylaw. I have a motion.
There should be another motion from close.
But there's secondary, a second motion from close. I thought we did that in consent for the. Okay, with an open session motion from the other consent file then. Do we have a draft of the motion?
We have only, we only had one item in closed. So the closed recommendation was passed on consent. However, we did have to come, report out with the open session recommendation.
Do you mean the recommendation about the planning file?
The planning file, yes.
It was shown on screen and as on screen, it was included in consent. Is that correct? That's.
I thought we already passed that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We did clarify that it was as printed.
We like that about our planning commission, always double checks. So this takes us to confirming bylaw. I have a motion moved by. Oh, sorry. Counselor Plessy.
I think I'm looking for a little bit more information on this. Is it, from my understanding, there, there isn't any bus, electric buses to be purchased. They're not delivering any currently. Are you, are you hearing the same thing?
I, I can, I mean, jump in there?
No. For the, for, for the purchase of electric vehicles, that's buses, electric buses?
Yes.
My understanding isn't, there isn't any. They're not building them fast enough. They're not getting them out?
Correct. These are different style buses. They're a smaller bus that they will purchase.
This is the direct one, direct two?
Yes.
Right?
Yes. Door to door.
And then of the, of the monies, how much is, is being refunded by other levels of government?
I'm, I'm going to ask Nash to, do you want to? Or, sorry, Mark. Sorry, my colleague, Mark, just to confirm the financial part.
Sorry, what was the question, Counselor? Is it, is it being refunded by other levels of government?
Not at this point, not at the.
It's being paid for by?
Through the capital, through, through reserve four.
And then, but, no, that's our money. So, but we're paying that back by this, the program?
So the Presto revenue.
How are we paying back reserve for?
At this point with the pilot project, we have, it'd be the next agreements beyond the pilot project that we would determine that.
Okay, but the, the program would be paying would ultimately, and is that captured in?
This program, any revenue we receive will be, will be used to, to pay it, but the ultimate longer term kind of fully whole thing would be after, we would have to see what the pilot brings us.
Okay. Usually if we're taking, if you come with something to us, you're taking something at a reserve to pay that back. You're telling us how it's being paid back to, right? And I don't, I, that's what I didn't, I didn't see. If you can, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I'm sorry, I, I can explain that better. So dormant capital from transit was used for the acquisition of these buses, which are available now. They're not buses, they're like the vans for Last Mile Transit.
Right.
The Presto revenue can be sent wherever we deem it. My belief, my suggestion, the motion with Counselor Tor, was that Presto revenue gets paid back into the same fund, but ultimately it could go into transit. It could go into pay for any aspect of, of, as we choose. My advice would be that the Presto revenue that probably Sakaria has suggested would go back specifically to this fund, similar to what we did with the ticket revenue for speeding cameras going back into the building.
Absolutely. And that's where I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. Exciting, very exciting. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. To the confirming bylaw, I have a motion moved by Counselor Vicente, seconded by Counselor Power. To the following bylaw, the adopter from the special council meeting of April 17th, bylaw 2025, to confirm the proceedings of council at a special meeting on April 17th, 2025. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to adjournment. This was almost as fast as the meeting that Counselor Keenan chaired on my behalf once and, once the deputy mayor chaired on behalf, not as fast, but almost as fast. Thank you for everyone's time today. We did want to tidy all this up. I have a motion moved by Counselor Tor, seconded by Counselor Power, who are trying to get on the agenda the most today, for seconding this motion. All those in favor? Motion carries.